Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday evening, February 25th, 2020. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item of business is the approval of minutes. We have minutes from two different meetings, February 11th and February 18th.
I've reviewed the minutes. I would move for approval, the minutes dated February 11th, 2020.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
And I'll move for approval of the minutes dated February 18, 2020.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Public comment on items not on the agenda. Okay. The next order of business is AGT Inc., doing business as Queen Anne Wine and Spirits, request for a change of location. Good evening and welcome.
Hi.
Good evening.
Could you both introduce yourself, please, for the audience?
Regina Macchione.
And Jeff Toccio for AGT Inc. This is a transfer request of the liquor license. It's a Section 15 license, which is the off-premise, from One Whiting Street, where Queen Anne Wine and Liquors has been for a whole long time, to a location up the street at 32 Whiting Street. So, basically, we're the post office, and then we've got 7-Eleven. The space was formerly August West, and then the Verizon Wireless is next to it. AGT has been operating from location for quite a few decades. It was organized in 1988. Regina is the manager. She's going to be the manager for the new transferred license. And what they're doing is they're downsizing from 2,600 square foot property down to 1,300. So, they're looking to right-size a little more in response to Cappy's Liquors and larger format, bigger box liquor stores. What they're doing is, instead of being kind of stuck in the middle, they're specializing higher quality, more hand-picked selection, et cetera, so going towards that customer base. They're in the same neighborhood, and we've submitted various letters. We've got support. Grace Realty Trust bought Bengel Wazwamptuck Hardware for decades at the property, and he's familiar with them, and he's pleased that he's got a local tenant going into the property. No violations, no issues whatsoever with the ABCC. Excellent business, excellent reputation. And Rockland Trust is going to be financing through our line of credit, and then we've produced all of their records, et cetera, for the property. She's got the tips training everyone there has. She's just recently updated it. It's a family-owned business. If you go there and you've got a big bulky item, you know, Michael or someone in the family will actually carry it out to your car, or if you buy tremendous quantities, they'll help you too. So, it applies to many people. She can answer any questions, or I can, if you have.
Sure, thank you. Chief, I see you in the audience. Any questions or concerns that you have?
No concerns now when I have the planning board on my side, which is a planning board to do local business, and we'll kind of add it to the top of the list.
Okay. And I would just note that we did get a document from Mary Savage-Donham this morning with respect to the events that went on last night in the planning board meeting. Joe, questions?
Yeah, as part of the planning board process, and I guess supporting part of this process, were notices given to neighbors or butters?
Yes.
Were there any comments received?
Yes, so we received notice or a call from William Benoit, who is the owner of the commercial building at 38 Whiting Street, which is where the Supercuts is, and then he's got a vacant spot. He had some questions with respect to the Patriot Ledger truck, was pulling up there in the parking lot and then walking the deliveries in. We met with Mr. Benoit on site, both the landlord, also the Macchionis', and he issued a letter in support as well. Otherwise, all the notices went out throughout the neighborhood, and again, in addition to the letter from Mr. Benoit, we did get one from Mr. Bengel, again, a long time. So, all of the reactions that we've had have been positive, and I think that's a reflection of their position in the neighborhood for such a long time.
Good, thanks.
Anything else?
No.
Yeah. I actually live very close by, so hello, nice to see you. And it's always been my experience that the property is well-kept. There have never been any issues, professionalism all the way through. My sense is that you'd like to move into this new location because it's maybe a little bit high-traffic in addition to being a smaller-size parcel, which is probably good for everybody. So, and Michelle, all the paperwork is in order?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Any questions from the audience on this request for a change of location? When will it take effect?
April 1st, we should be in for it.
Yeah, so we're shooting for the April 1st, and it's a white box build-out, so beautiful space, so it's floors, shelves, coolers, so we should be on track.
Okay. Want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the request of AGT Inc., doing business as Queen Anne Wine and Spirits, for a change of location from One Whiting Street to 32 Whiting Street, subject to the approval of all town boards and departments, and the approval of the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second, any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Best of luck in your new location.
Thank you.
Jeff, thank you. This was all very well put together.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is Capital Outlay Committee recommendations. Hello, capital friends, come on up. Eric, if you could introduce yourself and other members of your committee, both those that are present and those who are not present this evening?
Sure. So, my name's Eric Valentine. I'm the Chair of the Capital Outlay Committee. With me tonight on the committee is Kevin Flaherty. Representing AdCom is Libby Claypool and Devlin Cooper. Matt Goulet is also on the committee, but he's absent tonight.
Do you need to call your meeting to order? Have you done that?
We already did that.
Okay? Thank you. Eric, how would you like to walk through this?
So...
Thank you for preparing this and sending to us in advance so we could take a look at it.
Sure, yeah, no problem.
That's very helpful, and thank you for the exchange we had this afternoon. How would you like to walk through?
I can just give you a high-level summary and some of the high-level metrics, and then we can go from there.
Thank you.
Okay. So, for Fiscal 21, we followed our standard process of meeting with all the departments to review, you know, each of their Fiscal 21 capital requests in detail, understand the nature of them, the basis, you know, the priority from their perspective, you know, whether it was a risk item or, you know, a replacement for a broken capital item. After meeting with all the department heads, we then deliberated as a committee, and we rank and prioritize and categorize all the requests into buckets of Priority 1, 2, or 3, as well as annual, if there's some annual capital requests. And based on those categorizations, those, you know, help us make the funding decisions. So, when we first started to deliberate, excuse me, we had approximately 4.9 million of capital requests, and as I'm sure you're aware, our budget for Fiscal 21 was 2.5 million from the tax levy. So, we had to, you know, whittle it down based on prioritizations. Our goal each year is to try and fund all the annual and Priority 1 items. Unfortunately, this year, we couldn't get all the Priority 1 items, but, you know, we were able to fund the critical items that we thought were necessary. Let's see, of the 2.5 million from the tax levy, 1.1 represents annual capital requests, the balance of 1.4 is the Priority 1 items. Oh, specific to the school committee, I saw your other email that I just didn't get to respond. So, the requested capital items was, I think it was 2.2 or 2.4 before we deliberated, and that was, and so we funded 1.1 million. And that represents 45.7% of the 2.5 million tax levy. We, you know, we expect to be within the 2% to 5% of the operating budget, roughly 2.8%, 2.9% based on some draft numbers. We've preliminary included the water company, just because we know that, you know, has capital needs. We haven't met with them, and if we don't meet with them, we would remove them from the plan, but wanted to, I don't know, I guess, bring it to people's attention and include it if necessary.
Thank you.
That might cover the key items. Oh, one request that we had to defer was a new ambulance. I worked with Tom, and unfortunately, we couldn't fit it in the budget this year, but, you know, we've agreed to reconnect and figure out a solution long-term, if possible.
So, I did speak with the chief on this, and he understands and agrees that this is the right course of action for this year. He offered also to be a part of the conversations that we'll have here in the ensuing months so that next year, we have a plan.
Is he comfortable that the ambulance fleet will be sufficient in the next year?
Yes.
Okay.
Just a question about the process. I understand you start with the capital requests, and then you've whittled it down. Do you add anything so if somebody does not submit, you say, "You really need it," or you really start with the base of requests and move from there?
I'd say for the most part, we start with the basic requests. I mean, I forgot to mention Jean Montgomery. She's an ex-officio non-voting member. She's pretty diligent about, oh, she heard, you know, this department has a request in Fiscal 22, and she'll add them to the plan. But the main core, you know, recurring, you know, main departments that, you know, are capital-intensive, you know, we start with their initial request base.
Okay.
Do you have any questions about any of the specific?
No, I've gone over it in detail with Michelle and with Tom.
Eric, thank you for, I had asked Eric a question earlier. I'm always curious that, you know, we're funding, you know, about 2.5, but what was the request? And it sounds like, basically, for every dollar that's being recommended, there's a dollar that's being deferred. You mentioned that the committee had wished that it could, which of the Priority 1 items that the committee, did the committee have to defer? Is the ambulance one?
The ambulance was one. There is a partial renovation in the police department for the firearm and interview room. There was a command vehicle, and I'm not sure of the other ones yet, but those are the main ones.
Are there, you know, any of those deferrals that were, that really kind of gave you pause? I mean, I think we're all feeling this year that this is a year of challenging choices for all of us, and was there anything that was particularly difficult to defer? The ambulance?
Yeah, the ambulance was, that was difficult just because if we were going to fund it, we would have had to really, you know, dig into all the other departments, which we, you know, didn't necessarily feel comfortable doing.
Sure.
But after, you know, connecting with the chief and, you know, getting his input that it would be okay to defer one more year, you know, at the, you know, that'd be the maximum, you know, it could only be deferred one more year, we felt, you know, comfortable deferring that.
Yeah. And just for the benefit of the public, the town runs its ambulance service, and therefore, actually, it generates about $1.3 million in revenue for the town every year, and we have primary ambulances and backup ambulances, but it's often the case because we get 4,500 calls for service a year. So, our ambulances are on the road a lot. We do have, we just put a new ambulance into service earlier this year. So, what we try to do as we get a new ambulance is then have, you know, take another one off the road and have it be the backup.
Well, just to elaborate, and the chief's been, you know, he wants to work toward, you know, I guess, a more cadenced renewal process where each ambulance is active for, I think, four years, and then reserved for four years. And so, we have four ambulances, so that would require a new ambulance every two years. So...
Yep. Just on the water company, because actually, we are your water commissioners.
Okay.
So, I think what I'd like to do, maybe after this meeting, is just maybe send you an email with the capital for the out-years.
Okay.
The original town financial model called for $2.7 million in the first year with then a 5% increase every three years. And I think those numbers are kind of buried in a financial model, so what we can certainly do is just put that in for the out-years so that it's consistent. Next year, I would envision, as we do a more detailed capital study, those numbers will change.
Okay. And so, as far as the funding sources, should it be through user rates or other funding or borrowing?
The water company is just like the sewer where it's an enterprise fund, so all of the capital expenditures for the water system will be paid through the enterprise fund, which is funded through water rates.
Okay.
Yeah, so it will not have a taxpayer impact.
Just Mary, I thought that when we're looking back at the model, that the annual capital expenditures are being, are going to be borrowed, and then it's the operating expenses that will come from user rates and fees.
You're actually correct on both, Council Libby. We will borrow for the capital. We're actually going to take that Warren article up later, but the debt service will be paid out of the enterprise fund budget.
Gotcha.
So, the debt service will be, it's, you know, I think next year, it's $152,000.
It's a borrowing article with the debt service coming from it.
Correct.
Funding.
Correct. But again...
So, it's similar to the country club where...
It's going to be similar to, like, the maintenance facility?
Yeah, okay.
Exactly. It's going to be the, you know, kind of the same way. As, I had one other question, which was, in the Harbor Master account, that looked like it was coming from the waterways, and I just wanted to double-check with the town administrator. I think it was $58,500. I just might ask the town administrator to maybe follow up on that with the waterways account, with the dredging. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page with respect to that funding source.
When he came to you, he didn't?
So, he, well, he indicated that the, you know, fund changed, but that all those capital items were going to be paid for out of that fund?
Right. Yep. That was my understanding.
And actually, I had that Warren article last year for the dredging and that new fund, and so now, statutorily, the mowing permit revenue has to go into that, whereas before, it was a little less clear. So, now, that's all going in there, so it doesn't have to come from that.
That's what we were doing. It shouldn't come from that, so...
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page, because I remember there's a little bit of a change this year.
Yep.
Okay. Just Eric and for the committee, just a general question, as, you know, we always like to look into the out-years as well, and I know that every year in Capital Outlay, as we're making tough choices, we're deferring. As I'm looking at some of these out-years, I guess my, you know, my question is, what's the committee's view on the Article 6 capital funding as we look into those out-years? I think right now, in the forecast, we have it increasing by $100,000 every year, which, on a base of $2.5 million, is not very much.
Right.
Is your job, is it getting more difficult?
I mean, I'd say, I mean, in general, yes. I mean, every year, it seems like there's more requests, and higher-dollar requests, you know, seem to be coming in more. I mean, I'd say in Fiscal 22 and 23, there's, you know, the ambulance got pushed to next year. There's, I think, a new fire engine in 23 for 600, and there's the parking lot for 600, the library parking lot for 600 in Fiscal 22. So, I think a lot of items will, are large enough that they probably require a warrant. So, I mean, I guess, there's no initial cause for concern, but as, you know, based on history and larger items, you know, being included in warrants. But absent that, then, you know, I think we would need significantly more funding.
Okay, yeah.
I just want to follow up on the ambulance, because I do know that the ambulance generates funds for the town. If we defer that expenditure, does that impact our projected revenue for?
No, it shouldn't. It's still the same, the same number of ambulances are running.
It's just what's active versus...
There might be some additional maintenance costs, for instance, if an older ambulance is breaking down a couple of times more than a new one.
Okay.
That kind of thing, but no, it shouldn't.
Or the, you know, the other difficulty is that if an ambulance is out of service, you know, we had, you know, an axle break or something on an ambulance, then we don't necessarily have a backup, and there are circumstances where we will have two or three calls simultaneously.
Yeah, at that point, we wouldn't have a backup, because the backup would be in service.
Right. And that's where we then rely on mutual aid. So, most importantly, if you call 911, someone will be there for you, but to the extent that our colleagues in Norwell or in other community respond to that call, they then have the financial benefit of that call.
Yeah, we could talk to the chief about the number of times the backup is in service and a call comes in that had to go to mutual aid. My guess is it's not very often.
Yeah, my understanding was with the new ambulance purchase last year, that enabled them to retire the oldest ambulance. I think the reserves are pretty decent, you know, comparatively. And then just one other note is that, I think, largely driven by, like, the China tariffs is the ambulance cost goes up 6% a year for the manufacturer, so, you know, they're not going to get any cheaper, unfortunately.
Right. Yeah, yeah.
That'll be a part of the research that we do with the chief, that Eric and I, when we start working on this.
I think, you know, every year, as we go through capital, we sort of find some things that we like to try to take a look at in the off-season, and I think certainly, that's one of them because of the size of the amount. Did you have any other questions?
No.
Is there anyone in the audience who has a question about the capital outlay budget?
I have a question.
Could you please, if you could please come up to the microphone, and if you could please introduce yourself, direct the question to the chair. The benefit of the microphone, just so everybody knows, is because people who are watching this on Harbor Media need those microphones to pick things up.
Hi, I'm Priya Howell. So, my question is, what were the capital outlay requests of the school committee that were being deferred?
I mean, there's quite a few. I mean, there's a lot of HVAC maintenance. There was, I think one of the larger ones was 100K for miscellaneous technology that wasn't identified. There'd be, you know, roofing, you know, repairs, I think some tree maintenance. I don't know. I think, I mean, that's the, that'd be the largest ones.
And just as a follow-up, are any of those in what the school committee had put as the most critical items on the budget?
So, that was the operating budget?
That's the operating budget.
Yep, so this is, so, and thank you for the question. So, in our operating budget, which is roughly $100 million, we have about $2.5 million set aside for capital outlay for the town, and that's to replace fire trucks and provide computers at schools, et cetera. And so, as we're looking at operating budgets, whether it's, you know, for teachers or police officers, that's separate from the capital outlay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Which I think just leads me to one thing, which I say every year, and Libby doesn't like when I say it, and she's not going to like it this year. Libby knows what's coming, so this is the time of year, as we're moving to settle the budget, where we're looking at how to best balance the budget. And as of right now, we have about a $1.7 million deficit, and not a lot of new revenue and things coming in that's going to change that to a material degree. So, you know, Mr. Mayo is prioritizing the budget requests for the municipal side. My understanding is that Dr. Austin, in conjunction with the school committee, is also looking at priorities. And while I understand that Capital Outlay has, is proposing an Article 6 budget that is consistent with what's in Article 6, I would ask that the committee be prepared if we ask you to prioritize, if, you know, if we have a budget gap and we've all got to kind of come together and everybody do their part, I just want to kind of give you a little bit of notice that that would be coming. It's our hope to try to fund as many initiatives as possible, and certainly, everything is worthy, but, you know, and, you know, just so that, you know, maybe you've got something to work with, you know, I'd assume 10%, and I don't want you to think that capital's getting cut 10%. I just, I don't want you to go and prioritize your entire capital budget. So, you know, if the budget were to have to be reduced by about 10%, what would the committee recommend? And I understand that that would mean additional Priority 1-type recommendations, but it's something we ask every year. I'm so glad that in the past few years, we haven't had to do that with capital.
Yeah, we can prioritize.
Because Libby reminds us of the consequences of that, but we also have to just be responsive to the economic realities that we have right now.
Right. Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. My understanding is that the advisory committee is going to be taking up, you're going to be taking up the budget next Thursday?
The operating budget?
The operating budget on, is it the 5th?
Uh, yes, I believe.
Okay. So, I would just coordinate that with, so that the advisory committee has kind of that information.
Okay.
We will be taking up budgets on the 3rd, so...
And I don't know if I should get to the mic, but I don't...
Libby, if you wouldn't mind, I don't want people at home to not be able to hear. Thank you.
Libby Claypool from Advisory Committee and Capital Outlay. And I just wanted to mention one thing, because we're talking about, as you married, you mentioned about looking in the out-years. If you notice on the cruisers for the police department, is it every fifth year, Eric?
Yeah.
Is it no-buy year?
Yes.
So, we've already looked at the fact that we know we have to defer that ambulance, but next year is a no-buy year, so if you look at that, that's, we always get a little breathing room when that happens, and this next year's that year, so I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
And that's in the annual number that Eric gave you, in the 1.2 of annual items.
Thank you. That came up quick.
Yeah.
Yeah, it did.
You know, thank you to you and your committee. Just so everybody knows, the way the capital outlay process works, every department, and I think it's over 20 of them?
I'm not sure.
20, 15 to 20 departments.
We don't have to meet with them all, because somebody didn't have requests.
Yeah, put together capital outlay requests, and this is a group of seven of your fellow citizens who just work diligently, week after week, to look at all these, to make evaluations, to look at how to leverage the town's purchasing power, and really, you're just wonderful custodians of not just the town assets, but the financial resources that we put into it. It's always very difficult when you have to say no as much as often as you say yes, and we appreciate your diligence, how thorough you are, and our thanks to everybody on the committee for your great work.
Thank you.
All right.
I just had one other item. So, we haven't met with the water company, if we're going to include it in the plan, so I don't know if, I'm not sure if it's a requirement or not, but I don't know, I wanted to propose, you know, potentially meeting and going through the capital items there.
I think we could probably have a phone call with Tom just later this week, and I think the very quick thing we can just do is update those numbers in the out-years to be consistent with the financial information presented at town meeting next year. And I think that's, I think that's the best way to handle it.
Okay.
Until the town takes ownership of the water company and the transfer occurs, there will be no capital spending.
Okay.
But then, I would say that going next year, we would be on your list of people that you would reach out to for a capital request, and we would come before the committee, you know, similar to the country club in the sewer.
Okay.
And, you know, we'd look forward to doing that.
All right, sounds good.
Can I just blank on that? Libby Claypool again. Is, as long as the water company's going to close, the budget we're looking at right now for Fiscal 21 is the fiscal year ending June 30, '21. So, as long as the closing's going to happen before then, then the 2.7 or so that's in this year's capital and potentially whatever operating budget gets submitted is what town meeting's approving, once the closing happens. So, as long as the close is happening prior to that June 30, '21 date, then these numbers, you know, when this article, when the multiple water articles were in the warrant last year, part of the marketing was, this is going to go through... were in the warrant last year, part of the marketing was, this is going to go through this rigorous vetting of capital and of AdCom on the operating budget. Yet we don't have any detail on that. So I, it's, I feel a little uncomfortable putting it in our budget if we don't even know what's in there. And yet, it's, if it closes before that date, then we're kind of responsible for whatever was approved. And that's, the expectation from capital is that they were going to be seen, just like we do with the other enterprise fund, which is the country club, and going through capital requests.
In this, in this time where we don't yet own the water company, we would leave it to the capital outlay committee's discretion as to whether you'd prefer to keep it in your capital schedule or whether you'd prefer to, to keep it out. Either way is fine with us. When the town, when the town owns the water company, one of our first items of business, as we've stated, you know, all along, is to do a very thorough capital study to identify the capital requirements and prioritize those, which will form the basis for a capital plan. The warrant article the board's taking up tonight is, is basically making those funds available so that, so that when the, the town takes over, and if it isn't by June 30th of 2021, I'm going to jump out of one of these windows.
Okay, so you just see, Mary, that for this first year being a little unusual because things aren't quite firm up.
We don't, we don't own the water company yet. We don't have access to the facilities. So we're just not in a position to, to do the capital study. What we are doing is, as we think good custodians of the water company, is to make sure that the funding is available so that when we have access and we do the study, we can begin to make capital improvements. So this, this first year is going to be
Yeah, I understand it's a little different.
A little different, but you're absolutely right. We, this capital outlay process is really important for all of us to follow. And I think it gives the taxpayers a level of insure, of assurance that the capital investments in the town are appropriate. And so we'll look forward to, to going through that process with you next year.
And I would say if you look at this plan, there's nine, there's actually nine capital warrant articles. So what we've tried to do in the 10 years I've been on capital is make sure that we kind of get them all on here so that somebody can look at this and it kind of stands alone and actually pulls. So you'll see a lot of footnote references to warrant articles. So we try to have it so this document stands on its own for what is being recommended by the town for capital from not just the operating piece, but also the warrant article. So just be aware of that when you're looking at it.
And I, I just add one thing in closing. That's very helpful because as a town, we invest a lot in capital. Actually, from 2000 to 2018, we invested $185 million in capital in the town of Hingham. That's an average of $10 million a year. And that's everything from the items we're talking about here to schools, to land purchases. $186 million in 18 years is, is pretty significant.
Yes, we've come a long way with getting the current year warrant articles on this. And we may not have, you know, now we're really trying, and this year there were nine. So hopefully we can continue to do that so that everyone can really see the total investment, not just from the operating capital, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, the next item of business, we're, the board's going to be taking up four warrant articles this evening. The first item is Article AA. This is a citizen's petition for the tree preservation bylaw. Ms. Howell, I, I'd like to invite you up to the table. I understand that you have a presentation. Ms. Howell, will you be able to sit at the table and speak into the microphone so that the viewing audience at home will be able to hear you?
Or would you round?
It'd be easier.
Or, or up here? We just need you at a microphone.
Yeah, I, this one would be a better.
Is that your preference? Sure. And if you could, first of all, welcome. And if you could start out by just introducing yourself and also if you could just give us your address, that's kind of our typical process.
I'm Priya Howell. I live at 26 Stell Pret. I'm the lead proponent of the citizen's petition for a tree preservation bylaw. And I, I did prepare a, a presentation. It's pretty short. I mostly want to answer any questions that you have, so please.
May I just, before you start, I'll just let the audience here in the room and viewing, we're going to ask you to, as, as the proponent of this, to make a presentation to the board. Then the board will ask questions, so we may have some conversation on that. Then we will open it up to the public for, for questions and for comments. And then we'll probably bring it back to the board for, for a vote this evening. So that's a little bit about, about how this will work, so.
Great, thank you. Thanks for your time. So yes, please do feel free to jump in anytime. And of course, I'll answer the questions in the order that you mentioned as well. So I wanted to start just by level setting the provisions that we currently have in town that relate to tree removal. There is the Public Shade Tree Act, which addresses street, uh, street trees that are defined as public shade trees, any trees that are in the boundaries of a public way. If you want to trim or cut them down, they require, that requires tree warden approval. And in some cases, depending on the size of the tree, it can also require a public hearing. The second is a policy of the Conservation Commission, which relates to removal of trees in resource areas and in buffer zones around resource areas. And resource areas are kind of like wetlands, but they're, they are more broad than just wetlands. And so in the policy, if you are going to remove a healthy tree from a resource area or a buffer zone of a resource area, you have to plant a replacement tree. And there's a ratio, depending on how close you are to the resource area, you either have to plant it on a one-for-one, a two-for-one, or a three-for-one basis. However, if the lot size cannot support planting all those trees, you can get a waiver. The other two bylaws are not limited to trees. They have to do with projects that trigger site plan review. Under site plan review, the planning board is required to consider the adequacy of open space and setbacks, including adequacy of landscaping of such areas. And for projects that are subject to the subdivision rules, there are requirements for getting the tree warden to approve the proposed street trees. If it's a dead-end street, there's a requirement for landscaping the center island. And there's a provision that says due regard shall be shown for all natural features such as large trees, which if preserved, will add attractiveness and value to the subdivision. So in all of these provisions that are triggered in connection with construction, what we are really concerned about is what does the development look like after? We're not so concerned with where did we start? So what we have is, is a great start. It's more than some places have, but it's less than others. The gaps in what we have currently is that if you're undertaking construction and you're not in a resource area or buffer zone and you don't trigger site plan review or subdivision requirements, then you can pretty much do what you want. And when you do, when you are in the site plan review or subdivision rules, there is a tension between wanting to have open space, which we prioritize in the language of these bylaws, and preserving existing trees. And our ability right now to say that, you know, if you cut a tree here to make room for a house or a driveway, a front yard, a backyard, our ability to say you have to plant replacement trees is limited by the lot size that we're dealing with. You know, we just simply, if you have a wooded lot and you cut down all the trees to make space for these things, there just isn't a way for us to require people to replace all of the trees that are cut down. And so the tree preservation bylaw has three components, protection, mitigation, and contribution. So protection is the first part of it. It requires that if you are undertaking a certain type of project that the tree preservation bylaw is pertinent to, then you have to put a tree save area around a tree that you want to retain. So the idea here is that if a landowner wants to keep a tree, that's a mature native species tree, then they should put a boundary around it because what we know is that during the course of construction, a lot of things can happen that can damage a tree. And even though you didn't cut it down, you know, a few months, a year later, the tree has been damaged in a way and ends up becoming unhealthy and having to be removed. That can be because the soil gets compacted from heavy machinery or because you dump soil fill there while you're doing something else with it. But if we employ this building practice, we can make sure or at least reduce the chances that the tree gets inadvertently damaged. And then for any other trees that are mature native species of trees, we require that the owner either replant trees on a one-for-one basis. And the size of that replacement tree is determined by the size of the tree that's cut down. So there's a ratio of, for every one inch diameter, we would require a half-inch caliper of a replacement tree. And then when the lot size runs out, the new thing that's being introduced is a tree fund that would say now that you can't replace these trees, you pay a contribution into the tree fund that's calculated in accordance with the schedule. And then the town can use that money to plant new trees. So this is a flow chart, there are two flow charts that show when a tree plan is required and if the plan is required, what trees are protected in that tree plan. So I won't, you know, walk through the whole decision tree, but the main thing to keep in mind here is that it doesn't apply every time anyone wants to cut down a tree. Only applies if you're doing one of three types of projects, you're building on a vacant lot, you're expanding the footprint of a building by more than 20%, or you are demolishing a structure that is at least 250 square feet. And that's because, you know, it just isn't practical to enforce a bylaw in a town of our size every time anyone wanted to cut down a tree. But also because when people are doing these types of construction project, it's a moment where they're making a profit from cutting down a tree. Whether it's because they now have a house that they're going to flip or they've increased the equity of their building by increasing the footprint. It's fair to say that this cutting down of the tree is costing the community money. It's costing the, the community value of the tree. And so if you're going to profit from cutting down the tree, you should be able to use a portion of that profit to make the community whole for the damage that is being done. So the benefits of the tree fund is, as I was saying earlier, that when you have a wooded lot and you clear a large space, you can't possibly require the person to replace every tree that they took down. It's also important because in 2018, that's the last year that I saw information on the town website, we had a net loss of almost 300 trees. So the town cut down about 300 some trees, planted about 600, or sorry, 60 trees. And that's not counting tree loss on private property. That's only counting tree loss on Hingham property, town property. So, you know, as our population grows and our carbon footprint grows, one way that towns with climate action plans combat this is by aiming to have net tree growth. As you plant more trees, it helps to reduce energy. The shade means that people don't have to use as much air conditioning. It also sequesters carbon. So in order to try to get to a place where your carbon footprint isn't as expanding as rapidly as your population is expanding, having a net tree growth model helps to sequester some of the carbon that's being created. But planting trees, watering them, taking care of them, all costs money. This is a way that we can build up that resource and match it to the damage that is being caused. So, you know, there's just something equitable about saying, well, you know, you cut down these trees. So rather than raising taxes, and as we all know, the town has a lot of demands on its budget, this is a way where we can earmark funds to plant new trees without having to go to taxpayers. And so the other thing, you know, that I want to mention is that, you know, we know that the compressor station in Wamif is barreling forward. Last I heard, we expect it to be online by September. I think that this bylaw makes sense no matter what, but one of the real pressing needs that we have is that we don't have a lot of data on the air quality here in the South Shore. We think it's probably not great, given all of the industry that we have in the Four River Basin. We'll learn a lot more about that once the air quality monitors come online in sometime in May to July. But if we build up resources now, it will help us to consider more innovative and large-scale projects in the future. You know, Foster in particular is three miles downwind from the compressor station. I don't know where the new school, when there's a new school will be built. But if it came to a time where we said, hey, you know, this would be great if we could build a tree wall here, we don't have to search for how we're going to come up with the loose change to put those things in place if we are, start now collecting on trees that are being cut down in connection with these types of construction projects. And even though this bylaw is new here, it's not, you know, a new concept. Newton has had something a little bit more broad than this actually since 1999. It's existed in California and Canada. Concord adopted it in 2017. And I also listed some of the amendments that have happened to the tree bylaws in these different towns. You know, three of these are benchmark towns of Concord, Lexington, and Wellesley. And what we found is people put these in place and then they continue to tweak them as they learn things or as processes change, as the zoning ordinances might be updated. So we can do the same thing. I think we'll learn a lot by implementing this type of a provision now, seeing how it goes. And if it turns out that it's not perfect today, we can come back and amend it and make it better and stronger. But waiting longer will cause us to lose the opportunity to get some contribution from any projects that happen between now and whenever we implement it. So just the last note that I wanted to make is that I did have some conversations with HMLP and they did suggest some clarifications to the language since I submitted the citizen's petition. It doesn't change anything substantively, but I wanted to flag that I do think it, it helps address their concerns. So that is all I had for the presentation.
Thank you. What compelled you to bring this forward?
Well, a number of things. I actually read about Concord doing it and I find everything that Concord does is very interesting. They were one of the first to ban single-use water bottles. They are a very environmentally conscious community and I think that Hingham is a very environmentally conscious community. We've, I think, passed pretty much every green measure that's come up at town meeting in the last couple of years. I am one of the people who's appealing the air permit for the compressor station in the Hingham 10. It's something that, you know, really keeps me up at night. I have twins. They're actually sitting in the hallway. They, they both were born, you know, preemies. They still have some asthma and, you know, air quality for healthy people, you know, you don't really think about it. But when you don't start off from that place of being, you know, a strong, healthy person who can go run a 5K, it does, it makes a real difference. And I think that this is a time where, you know, we are in a climate crisis and this, we can start doing these small things to help improve the situation and learning from what we're doing and doing more.
Yeah, well, thank you again for bringing this forward. Joe, maybe you can lead off questions?
I will. Just to preface before getting on this board, I first served on the Conservation Commission, spent a lot of time focusing on the importance of trees in that environment and also served several years on the zoning board where we, when we issue special permits, we certainly look at the impact of projects and how they'll, how the trees, as well as other aspects of the environment are affected. I wanted to ask, I noticed in the proposal, it's, you're, you're looking to safeguard trees that are six inches or more in diameter. Where did that number come from? And just, the reason I ask, I know that's the number in Concord. I know that the number in Newton is eight inches. The number in Wellesley is 10 inches. So what assessment led you to six inches as appropriate for Hingham?
So a few things. Wellesley is actually in the process of trying to amend their bylaw at their 2020 town meeting to bring it down to six inches. Concord's at six inches. The Conservation Commission policy right now is at six inches. I think it seemed, you know, I, I wanted to go four inches or three inches, but I thought that since everyone else is.
One for twigs.
Yeah. I thought that if everyone else was at six inches, that seemed like a reasonable place to start.
So, and so Newton's at eight. So, and so Newton's at eight inches. As far as I know, they're not looking to decrease it. And my understanding is that the communities actually looked, did an assessment of what was appropriate for their community. And I'm wondering if that assessment was done for Hingham?
That is a good question. I did not do a specific assessment for Hingham, other than look at what the Conservation Commission's policy was and where they started requiring replacement trees, and theirs was at six inches DBH. So, I'm not sure if the Conservation Commission looked at it and had further analysis before they came up with six inches.
But they're looking at it for trees in wetlands, wetland areas, and you're not in wetland areas. So I'm just, I'm not sure that it's appropriate to be using that standard throughout the I think the effort to make sure that we respect the trees that are here is important. I just want to make sure that we're going through the right process, and whatever comes and is voted on in Hingham is the right approach for Hingham. What would be the impact of the bylaw on people who need to cut down trees because the Board of Health is requiring changes for septic systems? Would that be covered by the bylaw? So they need a new leaching field, for example, or whatever. Would that type of activity be covered by...
I don't believe it would be covered, because it wouldn't fall under one of the three types of building permits, which is, you know, building on a vacant lot, expanding your footprint, or demolishing a building of 250 square feet or more. I don't believe that those permits are implicated if you are cutting down trees for a leaching field or a new septic system.
So, but if there's a Board of Health requirement for, someone wants to add in addition to their home, that would trigger the process?
Right. So if it was just the septic, no. But if also...
In conjunction with another project.
In conjunction with expanding the footprint of your home, yes.
Okay. I made some other notes here. Let me just take a quick look.
And just to address your point about the six inches, I think that one of the important things for us to do is to start gathering data about what works in Hingham. And if it turns out that six inches is too small, it picks up too many trees, we could always come back in a year and make it bigger. If it turns out that actually six inches is too big and we're not protecting any trees, we can come back and make it smaller. But I don't know that the difference between six inches and eight inches, you know, is worth waiting a whole other year of studying it, because we've seen all around, you know, in towns like Wellesley, Concord, that six inches seems to be the standard. I'm not, and we could look at, like, we could look at, you know, other towns outside of, I mentioned the ones that were mostly our benchmarks. But I think, I read, like, 14 of these. I think six inches was by far the most common number.
So the standard in Wellesley is 10 inches right now?
It's 10, but they're amending it to make it six.
And I noticed in some of the other communities, there were exceptions. For example, for if you were living in your home, and you would live there for several months before, were you gonna live there 18 months after that, the bylaw did not apply. Are those exceptions included in what's being proposed?
I did not include those exceptions. There is, I think Newton's the only one that has that exception. However, in Newton, they are not just tying it to expanding your footprint, it's any building permit that you pull. So, it has a much broader scope, but then they have the 18-month exemption.
Do you know what the result has been in Newton? Are they, is it working, is it not working?
I mean, I think it's working in some ways. It's generated a lot of revenue. There's been some large-scale development projects that have resulted in large deposits into their tree contribution fund. They actually, because of those deposits, they previously outsourced a lot of the contracting of tree removal to contractors. Because of the money that they got, they were able to buy a lot of the equipment that they needed, and then take that in-house, which actually resulted in a further cost savings. But in other ways, it hasn't worked. There's been a lot of, you know, really large historic white oaks that have been cut down, and then people live there 18 months, and the town doesn't get anything...
Exactly.
Despite having, you know, a significant loss of historic trees.
Thank you. I had some additional questions. With respect to the contribution, just kind of order of magnitude, have you given any thought to what the, I mean, if, you know, what the contribution might be? Is it $100, is it $1,000?
So there's a schedule, you know, at the back, and there's some...
Sorry, I missed it.
Oh, no worries at all. And there is some sample numbers there. And the thing to keep in mind is that those don't, you know, the contribution doesn't start if you can replant the trees on your own lot.
Yep.
And there are, what you'll see is there are two contribution scales that are proposed. One is for residential property, and then the other gives the select board the opportunity to apply a reduced contribution scale if they find that a project provides, you know, a different type of community benefit that offsets some of the damage, and we want to encourage that. So, you know, not all development is the same. If something is gonna bring jobs, or is gonna create a tax base that we really want to encourage, the select board can decide to apply the reduced scale.
Okay. Thank you. So, I actually went onto Concord, and I've looked at their bylaw, and my question was, did you speak to people in Concord to find out, like, how it's going, what's it like to administer, what, you know, what they like about it, any unintended consequences? I mean, what sort of feedback...
I did have some, I'd had some brief conversations with some arborists who are doing tree plans in Concord. I haven't yet been able to connect with someone who's there. It's pretty new in Concord, you know, it was passed at the 2017 meeting, but then they had some time to implement rules and regulations under it. So it hasn't been in place for a very long time. Generally, I think, they think it's going well. Theirs was a little bit more limited in scope, because it was limited to residential properties, and most of the other bylaws apply generally, not just to residential construction projects. This one is not proposed to be limited to just residential properties. But I think it's early days there, so...
So, I mean, I, so I printed these out. So, what Concord's put together is, there's a packet of frequently asked questions, there's an application, there's, there actually are two applications, oh no, there's an absence of protected tree affidavit, then there's all these rules and regulations. So, would I be correct in saying that if this were to be adopted, all of this work would have to be created?
I mean, I think the good news is that a lot of it could be borrowed from what Concord has done, but, but yes, I think there's still mechanics that would need to be worked out. And the bylaw provides, you know, a certain number of time for the select board to come up with those mechanics that would work here in Hingham.
When would this, if this were adopted, when would it take effect?
Um...
And that may, and Ms. Howell, that may be a question for Mr. Mayo...
Yeah.
Because it's a, you know, some things at town meeting take effect right away, others have effective dates. But that was a question I had, because it strikes me that the administrative effort to establish this process would take some time.
Yeah, I mean, I think the AG might need to look at it, just to make sure that it's in keeping with the...
We don't want to implement something and not have the process set up.
Sure.
So it would be sometime after April 22nd, or 27th, maybe. It's usually a few weeks after that that the AG gets back to us.
Okay. And you mentioned, you talked about some of the current rules in Hingham. To what extent have you had dialogue with the Conservation Commission, the Shade Tree Committee, the Planning Board? We've gotten, we've got a lot of different documents, but we had a letter from the Director of Community Planning about this. To what extent have you socialized this with the other, the other boards and commissions that have jurisdiction over aspects of trees?
So, I have had some conversation, I haven't had any presentations in front of the full boards. I'm happy to do that, but in terms of the timing of when the bylaw was due, and when I drafted it, there wasn't enough time to get on their agendas beforehand.
Have you gotten any feedback from staffer boards about any, you know, potential areas where things might be in conflict, or any unintended consequences with the bylaw?
I have not heard anyone say that it is, that they see any conflicts, and in some cases, like the wetlands, the public shade trees, those are carved out of the tree bylaw. So they're exempt from the tree bylaw. So, if you are cutting down a public shade tree, that will still be in whatever the public shade tree process is. It's not covered by here. If you're in a resource area or a buffer zone, that will still be under the Conservation Commission's policy. So, they should fit together.
But we don't know that for sure.
Well, there's language specifically in the bylaw that exempts those from the purview of the tree preservation bylaw.
But I guess what I'm hearing is that some of these committees that, who might be affected by this, have not had an opportunity to review it and ask questions and give feedback yet?
They have not.
Okay. Do you know, with respect to the other communities, whether the bylaws that were in place in the other communities, were those general bylaws or zoning bylaws?
General.
All of them?
Newton is parks and recreation. Concord is a general bylaw. Wellesley is, I know it's, I think Wellesley is also a town bylaw. I can go back and look at the others, but I think generally because of, you know, the requirements to pass a zoning bylaw are higher, I think for the most part, they've all not gone the zoning route.
So, that was kind of the basis for them deciding which way to go?
I know, and Concord had a tree subcommittee report, and that's the one reason that they cite in Concord. I, you know, the other bylaws have been around since 99 and 2004, so I didn't go back and look to see what the rationale for the other towns was to not do zoning.
Okay. Thank you. I think, Joe, did you, before I opened it up to the public for questions or comments, did you have anything else at this point?
Did you have a sense of what the cost would be to homeowner or builder, if you're doing this? There's presumably, there's the costs of if they either replant a tree, or pay a fine, and then there's the cost, I think, of if they need to hire an arborist to do an assessment. Any sense of what the financial impact would be on a homeowner?
So, in terms of hiring an arborist to create the plan, it really depends on how many trees we're talking about, because the tree mitigation plan requires an inventory of the trees, the diameter, the species. So, you know, my understanding is arborist charge sort of generally by the hour, but when you're getting to, like, extremely wooded lots, there's GIS software that can expedite things, so that, you know, they're not going around counting every tree. But, you know, if it was a normal project where you're expanding the footprint, and you generally don't have a lot of trees right around the perimeter of your house anyway, it could be, you know, as little as a few hundred dollars. It can definitely go up from there. The contribution, you know, is meant to be steep, because if they can't plant all of the trees on their own property, then our town has to find a place for it, and has to have personnel plant it and take care of it and water it. So it's not meant to be, you know, a drop in the bucket. It's meant to be something that makes people really think about, do I need to cut down this tree, or is there another way? And then finally, in terms of the cost of actually buying trees, you know, we do require in the bylaw that it's a nursery-grade tree. It is supposed to be of a substantial enough size that there is a chance that it's going to take and grow roots. And, you know, again, that kind of depends on what species of tree are you choosing, how big does the tree have to be? And if it's an overstory tree, it's supposed to be replaced with an overstory tree. So there's too many variables for me to say, but again, it's not meant to be, you know, not a big deal. It's meant to be substantial enough that we rethink the calculus of how easy it is to cut down a tree.
People need to pause and say, is it worth it?
Right.
And I appreciate you're really balancing the public interest versus private property rights, and that's the balance that this bylaw is seeking to strike.
That's what I'm hoping to hear.
Okay. So, at this point, I think what I'd like to do is open it up to the audience for questions or comments. Ask to be recognized. Please direct questions or comments to the chair. If it's a question for Ms. Howell, I'll ask her to kind of take that up. So maybe if you don't mind staying up by the podium...
Sure.
Would anyone in the audience either ask a question or wish to make a comment?
I'll make one.
Okay, could you come on up?
I like to make comments. Do you want me to stand here?
You know, Melissa, you're gonna need to come to the microphone, because the viewing audience at home unfortunately can't hear unless you're speaking into a microphone.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Hi, I'm Melissa Smith of 223 South Street. I'm supposed to do that, right? Right, all right, yes, I thought so. It was a reflex. I love this. Priya has done her homework. I am super supportive of this, and I just, you know, and as I look around my own property and that of my neighbors, because when she told me about this, I thought, you know, how is this actually going to affect us? And, you know, it's just not, really, unless we decide to build out our homes and spread out edge to edge. But it will affect people who want to come in and mow down whole wooded lots and, you know, build edge to edge. And I just, I think it's, I think it's great. I think it's really smart to be following in the footsteps of towns like Concord and Newton and Wellesley. So, yay, that's it.
Thank you.
No questions, thanks.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
So, I am Peter Howell, 26 Del Pret.
Same address, same last name.
Same address.
I'm guessing a relation.
Lucky husband here, great job. So I just, obviously I'm in support of this, and I can say from personal experience that Priya has spent, I can't even tell you how many hours researching this. This has been a huge part of our life for the last three months, and she really has done her homework. I think a couple of the questions that were raised, some of the concerns that are sort of natural when you're thinking about this, is the, do we have the right size in terms of the six-inch diameter? Is the fee schedule right? These are all things that we can work out and figure out over time. I think the big concern that we have is that we're at a critical time right now with the compressor station going in. What is the next big project that's in the pipeline where there are going to be, you know, a massive tree clearing that happens, where we're gonna lose the protection that we get from trees in terms of carbon sequestering and shade and all of these things? And the town isn't gonna see any reward or benefit from that. We're not gonna be able to collect any fees from those trees being cut down that we could use to strategically replant. This is really a tool for the town, that we can, we can make this, figure out how to make this work, and it can be such a benefit. And clearly, at a time where, you know, we're seeing budget constraints, and I'm sure replanting trees is not at the top of the budget in terms of the priorities that we're looking at, but it's something that we can target with this, and we can really improve how many, how many trees that we're planting as a town. And one of the other questions that was raised is, should this be submitted as a zoning bylaw or general bylaw? I don't think there's any real legal reason why it makes a difference. I don't think that it needs to be zoning. It doesn't actually impact what people are allowed to do with their land. To me, it's really about conservation. And so I'm strongly in support, and I hope you guys will consider it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sure.
So, I am Sherri Sykes. I'm at 225 Summer Street in Hingham. And sadly, I'll be leaving Hingham, we'll be moving away. And I just wanted to say that as we are shopping around for a house in a new community outside of the state, I quickly notice communities... for a house in a new community outside of the state, I quickly notice communities or neighborhoods where there are no trees. The broker or the builder has come in and built up beautiful homes, but there are no trees. And I quickly, you know, mark it off the list. It's not where I want to live. And so I think that there's just something here about preserving the culture and the character of the town. And I guess I'm going to muse a little, just ponder a little bit. We often hear in Hingham meetings about the, you know, triple A rating of, you know, the town. And are you hearing anything going forward about preserving the character of the town with regard to climate metrics that would put some, some hooks in this to say that we really do need to have the carbon offsets to play in the future of where we're going? Because I think that needs to be considered now, and that's a brilliant plan she's got. Yes, I agree, maybe it needs to be worked out some, but, I mean, if, there's our kids. And yes, I don't know where she finds the time, because I'm a fellow mom and Girl Scout leader with Priya, and, you know, she's firing in all directions. I don't know how you find the time to do these things, but I appreciate it. And, and so I just, I'm, I'm, I'm meandering a little bit, but I'm just trying to say that the trees are more important than we realize. And when you, all you have to do is drive into a community where they've raised all the trees, and you really don't want to be there. You don't want to take a walk in their parks. So it's really important, whether it's for a public space or to press people in their wonderful little bubbles to keep the trees and, and put some teeth in it and think about Hingham as a triple A rating or whatever we've got, and how to maintain that going forward, especially with the compressor station. So.
Thank you.
Okay.
Best, best of luck. We're sorry that you're leaving.
Thank you. I'm sorry to go.
But best, best wishes to you and your family.
I'll always have friends.
She'll be here for town meeting, though.
Any, anyone else with a question or a comment? Katie, are you getting up to?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Do I have to run my?
Yeah, sure. Go, go on up.
Katie McBrien, 157 Central Street. My question's actually to you guys, because I'm super supportive of this effort, and I think it's amazing. So as a fellow citizen of Hingham, how do we, what are the steps that we can do so that people in the listening audience, if they're super excited about this plan, what's the next step that we can do to support this and have it go forward?
Yeah, well, I think we'll talk about that. I think that, you know, that there's a hearing process that goes forward, and that's, that's what we're here doing. This will go to the advisory committee as well.
Should we like write letters, or is there, there's something that you want to hear from other people? Facebook posts?
I think, I think, I think, why don't you hold on that? If, if your, if in our comments, your question isn't satisfactorily answered, we'll, we'll take it up then. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Do you want to start?
Sure. I think deforestation is a problem globally, and I think each community does need to address it. I think the comments that Mary raised, really the questions in terms of to what extent there's been interaction with the other town boards that look at this. I know, I, I think it's in Concord. It's the planning board that actually comes up with the regulations. It does make a difference if it's a general bylaw or a zoning bylaw, whether or not the zoning board's involved, who's, who's actually administering it. And I'm a little concerned, or more than a little concerned by comments I'm hearing saying, well, if it's not the right tree depth, we'll just change it. We, I think we should go in knowing that we've done our work, and this is the way to go. Not saying, well, maybe it worked in Concord and it's 10 inches or eight inches in other towns. Let's figure it out after we pass the, the bylaw. I'm, I'm not comfortable with that approach. I don't want to put the brakes on having something like this happen, but I do want to make sure that it goes through the right process and that we get the support of the town boards, the, the folks who are employees of the town that are actually going to have to administer this, so that we do it the right way. So I'm really struggling with the question that was just asked, which is what's the right process to make sure that we keep the community involved? We don't put the brakes on this, but we do it in the right, in the right order. So let me.
Yeah. So first of all, as your husband said, it is apparent that you've put a ton of work into this, and you are very invested in this community, in the compressor station, in this. And first and foremost, I want to say thank you. As, as someone who had children running down that hallway not too long ago myself, there are a lot of places where you can contribute your time and your talent, and we're very grateful that you're doing that here in Hingham. And you've done yeoman's work on this, and I think citizen petition articles are one of the hardest things to do in a community because, because of all the work that has to go into it. You know, as I'm looking at this, a couple, a couple of thoughts that I have. I think when something goes to town meeting, it, I think part of my job, and I think the job of the advisory committee, is to make sure that whatever goes forward to town meeting, we're putting our best case forward and our strongest foot forward, because, you know, you've been to town meeting. Hingham Town Meeting attendees are really smart, and they have expectations that, you know, we've really kicked the tires on everything. You know, it's just, it's, it's extraordinary what happens. I don't, I don't know how it compares to other communities, but, but Hingham voters want to know that, you know, the tires have been kicked on this. They want to know that, that all the, all the different parts of their government that are affected by something have had a chance to weigh in. And the other part that we always want to make sure of is that whether it's you or us, if we get to town meeting, we don't want, you know, the, the worst thing in the world that would happen is somebody stands up from another board or committee and says, I got a problem with this warrant article. That's, it, it's just really, really hard to recover for that, from that. So I, I think some of our job is to make sure that when something goes forward, it is putting its strongest position forward. Two or three years ago, Tom, I think it was three years ago, when we had the, the dog issue at Bear Cove Park.
Right.
We had a citizen petition warrant article put together, and our office worked really closely with the proponent, even though I didn't, dear friend of mine, I didn't support the article. But my job was to work with her to have her best foot put forward. So in the lead up to these hearings, we said, you need to go and talk to the animal control officer. You need to talk to the police department. You need to talk to the Board of Health. You need to go to all these places. And, you know, and, and did that work. And I think, again, that's, that's what allowed town meeting to have the information to make an informed debate. What I think is the, what I hate to see happen at town meeting is that something is voted down because the meeting didn't feel like it's ready versus on the merits. Because I think if you, if you're voted down at town meeting, regardless of the reason, it's, it's hard to come back with, hey, I've, I've, I've tried to work on this. And I, I really do think that that's particularly important on a warrant article that involves private property. My first foray into town government, I was on a zoning committee, and I was part of a group that was trying to limit the non-conforming residences. Basically, you know how people can bump out their house, and if it's, if it's, if it's in a setback, it can, and you want to bump out the back, you can, you can continue your non-conformity.
It's the Hatfield Amendment.
It's the Hatfield Amendment. And, and basically, what was really interesting was I thought, you know, well, wow, we had made a really good case. And when I got to town meeting, and even in the advisory committee, the thing that, the thing that we kept hearing is private property rights, and do the citizens, do enough citizens in town know about what's happening and what's going to happen, and are they okay with it? And the hat, our proposal to change the Hatfield Amendment was resoundedly defeated at town meeting on the basis of, while people understood the issue, and, you know, we were talking about things like surface area, and there's nowhere for the water to go. The private property thing was really important, so I think it's really important to get this right. My concern is that if this goes to town meeting right now, there are enough unanswered questions that I'm afraid town meeting would say no for the wrong reasons. And, and I would just as soon have us get this right. And, and I completely understand that every year matters, and that the compressor station is breathing down our necks. But we want to get a yes. We, we don't want to get a no. And I, as much as I understand the idea that, you know, if, if it isn't right the first time, we can tweak it for town meeting, I, I look at it, and from my perspective, it has to be, you know, I, I call it ready for primetime. It has to be sufficiently ready for primetime that town meeting will say, okay, this is, I'm okay moving ahead. I, I don't think this is here yet. And so I, I would, I would not be inclined to support it tonight, but I know that Mr. Mayo has talked about some of our staff being interested in continuing to meet and work with you to, to help move this along. And, you know, that's, that's part of our responsibility to citizens who want to put warrant articles together. I, I don't think that can be done in the next couple of weeks. And I don't think there's enough awareness in the public about this. And I don't think that because it could affect so many, it could affect people, it could affect so many people, I, I don't know that we can, I don't think that the, between the work to get it finalized and the outreach, I, I don't think that that can happen in the next couple of weeks. And I, I, I know you want to jump in here, so I'd, I'd like to please give you an answer to kind of respond. I know we're throwing a lot at you.
I'm sorry. You can go ahead first.
I was just going to add that the big projects where I'd be particularly concerned come in several areas. One would be the big 40B projects, which are, you know, developers who want to come in and they want to disregard town bylaws and zoning. And we face this issue specifically with trees for some of the large projects, which we fought and did not succeed, because, as you know, state law preempts anything that we do with respect to 40B. We're now in the safe haven so that we don't have to deal with that. There are other large projects that are coming down the pike that will require zoning relief. And the town does not have to give that zoning relief, particularly if these issues are not properly addressed. So in terms of the very large projects, I don't know of anything immediately that would happen, and then all of a sudden, we're going to get caught. And I would just echo Mary's words in terms of making sure that when we get it to town meeting, it passes. Because I think this is an important issue.
So I, I would say a couple of things. One, on 40B, my understanding is that the tree bylaws can still be applied to 40B projects and...
That's not correct. Other, only the Shade Tree Act.
Well, in Newton, they did not grant waivers of their tree preservation bylaws for several 40B projects. So maybe it's worth having a conversation with town council about that. But I reviewed a few different 40B applications that were requesting waivers of the Newton Tree Preservation Bylaw, and the board didn't grant those waivers and still collected. Actually, in a couple of cases, those 40B projects didn't end up going forward. The developers withdrew them. But that, that's the one point I wanted to make. But then, my other point that I wanted to make is that I actually think the votes are there. I think that people want to, even people that are about to develop their property, want to develop their properties responsibly. I was just talking to, Sherri was mentioning, I'm involved in the Girl Scouts, and they have a number of trees that have been badly damaged. They're going to be removing those trees. And because it's in like a buffer zone, they, I was talking to Peg Doyle, and she said, you know, these are the number of trees that we have to plant to replace it. And I said, you know, Peg, I don't know that you have to plant trees to replace these ones. They're clearly damaged and dangerous, and I think that you can just cut them down without replacing them. And she was like, I don't care if I'm required. I want to plant the trees because it's the right thing to do. And I think that that is a sign of the, you know, conscientious community that we live in. So I guess I, I don't agree that the votes are not there. I don't agree that just because it's going to affect private property rights, that people are not going to support this. I have actually, you know, canvassed, I've talked to people in the community, I've talked to, although I haven't been on the agenda of the planning board or the agenda of the Conservation Committee, I have talked to members of the planning board and members of the Conservation Committee. I think that they are generally supportive of it. But one thing that I, I would be willing to do is, you know, there's sort of two different ways that a warrant article could be brought. It could be this way where there's very specific bylaw language. Alternatively, I could have, you know, drafted a more general bylaw that says, you know, shell the town, adopt a town preservation, or constitute a committee to review doing a town preservation, a tree preservation bylaw. And if the board was open to allowing me to substitute this more detailed plan for something that's more general that provides that they'll have a committee look at it and adopt something, I would be open to substituting this bylaw, you know, for that type of a more general article that gives us more time to come up with the specifics.
Proceed, so procedurally, citizen petition warrant articles cannot be modified once they're submitted. That's, that's Massachusetts general law. And so the only way at this point that a, a warrant article could be submitted is if this board voted to open the warrant and insert a warrant article, which would then make us the sponsors of it. And for me, if I'm sponsoring a warrant article, it means that I'm saying I'm behind it. And I, I just don't think that I can do that tonight. I don't think that, I, I don't think that, that I, I'm not prepared to do that tonight. I'm prepared to, again, suggest that if you want to continue to pursue this, I think the appropriate thing to do is to, on a more formal basis, connect with the boards and commissions in town who would, who people would, who would be affected by this, or who might have a point of view, to find out from them, to have them look at the bylaw, to say, they may raise some, you know, on, some places where things are in conflict with some of the rules on the books, that, that we'd obviously want to get squared away. Or they may identify some unintended consequences, or they may have some suggestions to make it even tighter. I, I think that that work can't be done before town meeting, and, and, and at, at this stage, I'm not really in a position where I'd feel comfortable sponsoring a warrant article to initiate this work. I don't know what the scale of it is involved. Typically, as a board, we set goals, you know, right after town meeting for the year. I think that it would be, we, we would want to have a discussion of all of the body of work that the town wants to do, and consider this within that as well. Our office, you know, we, we hear from citizens all the time about things that they want us to do, things they'd like us to do. These two folks work 70 or 80 hours a week. So I, you know, before, before we're signing up to something, we, we have to look at it in terms of the, the collective body of work. So that would, I don't know if you have thoughts on that?
I think the idea of substituting the, the more general, that it's going to be a committee that'll propose it. I think we need a bylaw that has the teeth to make sure that it's, people, you know, know what's going on. So I really like the idea of, of the bylaw that you've proposed. I think it needs, it needs refinement. But I think that's the way to go, rather than the substituted version, because basically that would be asking town meeting to say, there'll be some committee that's going to set it up, and town meeting won't actually get to vote on it. And I think town meeting does need to vote on it. The work that you've done is, it, to a large extent, it parallels what Concord has done. I've really not heard how successful that is or not, and that's obviously something that will be asked at town meeting. that will be asked at town meeting. I think to make sure that it's, that we're not copying another town's bylaw, but actually we have the right bylaw for Hingham is what needs to take place. So I'm with you, Mary. I think where this is, is not something that I would want to move forward, but I do want to get this going. And just getting back on 40B, I know for a fact that state law will preempt this and that other, the 40B applicant may decide that they're going to pay the fine, pay the fee or not, but under state law, they don't, they simply don't. But we don't have to deal with that because we're now covered with respect to the 10% minimum requirement. I, I really wish that this had gone through and that we'd gotten reports from the Conservation Commission, from the planning board. We had their input and they say, we like it, or that we'd want to tweak provision three, whatever it is, and we're not there tonight. And I think we need to go through that process.
But we can get there.
Yeah.
But we can get there. And I know for all the work that you've done over the last few months, a year from now feels far away. By the same token, the goal here is to get town meeting to say yes.
If I can say, it's not just to say yes, it's to say yes to the right bylaw.
To the right bylaw. That's, that's right. And, and, yeah.
I think that the other risk of waiting is that it opens the path for people who want to cut down trees to just do it now preemptively, knowing that a tree bylaw is in the works. So I don't, I still don't think that a long runway is the right thing for the town because if someone knows that I have a year before this tree preservation bylaw goes into effect, there's nothing stopping them from going forward and cutting down their trees right now when nothing is preventing them from doing so. And I, again, I don't think that this is as out there as, as maybe it feels when you haven't had a long time to pore over all of the words. You know, Newton has had this in place since 1999. Other places in the country have had it in place since even before that. Hingham is unique, but it is not, you know, a totally different animal. It is pretty similar to other towns in Massachusetts.
But the bylaw that you've proposed here is nothing like the Newton bylaw.
It's, it's a, right, because we're not Newton.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, that's exactly the dialogue that we should have and say, it makes sense for Hingham. And I'm not sure that we're getting there this evening.
Okay.
I think, did you have any final thoughts or comments?
I don't, nope. I think I've said what I wanted to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So we have Article AA that is in front of us. I know that there was also a request to potentially modify the warrant article language or to respond to the HMLP issue again, which would require this board to insert an article and sponsor an article. I don't know if you want to make a motion with respect to Article AA?
So procedurally, the only thing we have before us is AA.
That's correct.
Without the modifications to deal with HMLP.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. I'm not in a position to, I'm at the place where I would be voting no action on Article AA, whether the HMLP language was in there or not, so.
But what I'm saying is, we know that at least that needs to be dealt with.
Yes.
And I, I mean, I tell you, I'm torn because I think this is an important issue that the town needs to address. I'm just, what I have before me doesn't tell me that this is the right way to address it. And I wish we had a town meeting every six months so that we, you wouldn't have that, the issue of longer delay. But I think Tom and Michelle would shoot me if we had a town meeting every, every six months.
I would also say that I think we've heard that, you know, there are people who want to do the right thing. So, you know, I've, I've heard kind of two arguments about the time lapse and I, you know, I, I think that, I look at it and say, I have a responsibility in town meeting before I support something to say, this is vetted, this is the right thing to do for Hingham, this works for Hingham, this doesn't have any adverse consequences on other aspects of laws the town meeting has passed. I can't say that tonight.
Yeah.
Could I say that down the road? Perhaps?
Yeah. I mean, I think you can tell where we're heading, which is most likely a vote for no action, but I'm trying to figure out how to communicate support for this and not have you leave or anyone else think that we don't think this is an important issue.
I think it would be to just support it.
Yeah, well, I think we're done here.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we, thank you.
So, so you're not substituting the...
Well, I think we need to make a vote.
Okay.
And then I can, yeah, hang on one second.
Okay. So with respect to what's before AA, I would make a motion for no action on Article AA.
Second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Aye. So, so Ms. Howell, let me just tell you procedurally what's happened here. So, so the board has voted no action on this. And we are not, which also means that we are not going to consider inserting a warrant article that addresses the point that Mr. Henyou made with respect to HMLP. So, you know, later on in this process, I think it might be Thursday night, you'll go in front of the advisory committee. They are an independent group. They have 15 members, 15 of your fellow citizens. You know, you will have an opportunity to make your presentation to them. It is the vote of the advisory committee that is the, is the, the recommendation of the advisory committee is what is printed in the warrant. So that's what happens. If the advisory committee votes no action, then that will be the recommendation that's printed in the warrant, and that's the affirmative motion at town meeting. But you'll have an opportunity to, you know, make your case to the advisory committee. And, you know, to the extent that, you know, depending on how their vote goes, if you have procedural questions about how this works at town meeting, you know, please call our office and Mr. Mayo or Ms. Montseguer would be happy to kind of walk you through how that works procedurally. I'd suggest you wait until you see what, what happens at the advisory committee.
Okay.
So again, we appreciate the, we appreciate the thoughtful work that's done here. I think, what I think Joe and I are trying to say to you is that our vote tonight is not right now, not ready. But I, I hope that we can continue to work with you and, you know, our, our office and the other boards stand ready to do that, to address some of the things you heard tonight. And, you know, we'd like to work with you together on this to, you know, see if, see if we can bring it to consideration for town meeting at a future date.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is Article P. Tom, do you want to walk us through that?
I'm sorry, sure. So Article P is a, an article that would modify the composition of the Citizens Advisory Board. If you remember, in the ramp up of town meeting last year, we had proposed a Citizens Advisory Board that was going to reflect the three communities. The, the, the anticipated makeup of that committee was that there would be three, three members from the town of Hingham to represent Hingham and one each from the town of Hull and Cohasset. I think this, this article is requiring, or suggesting that it would be appropriate, given the, the fact that there are 300 or so customers available in ours, in the system in Cohasset and some several thousand in Hull, that it would be more appropriate to have Hull have an additional, an additional representative, if for no other reason than to help with that workload. So the new, the new composition of the, of the cab, the Citizens Advisory Board, would be three for Hingham, two representatives from Hull, and one from Cohasset.
And I would add that when, when we went to Hull and appeared in front of the select board in the community in the lead up to the town meeting vote last year, this was a request from the town of Hull. Our colleague, Selectman Johnson, had contemplated whether we might want to amend the article last year that was establishing the cab. And the collective thought at that point was that probably wasn't the right time. But this was following through on some discussions that we had with Hull. Questions, thoughts?
Yeah, so I had a question. I understand that we wanted, that we're looking to give Hull an extra seat to reflect that they're significantly larger than Cohasset. Is there a reason that we would not want to increase this from five to seven? So that in part, it's an odd number and most likely will be a resolution, there won't be a tie. And that second, Hingham continues in the majority since just looking at the population, we are significantly more than Hull and Cohasset combined. So that, that consists, the composition of this group more appropriately reflects the populations of the three towns that are affected.
Yeah. I guess my, my thought was, is that because this is an advisory board, I don't, I was trying to think of whether there would be circumstances where this board would be voting on something where you'd have the propensity for a tie because, you know, I thought about that even odd kind of thing. And I think the role of the board, because it's advisory in nature and not policy, in my mind renders the odd even kind of thing a little, a little less important. I'm also just thinking that as, as we're looking at staffing committees and committees having quorums and things like that, I just worry, you know, as committees get bigger, it just makes some of those challenges a little bit more difficult. You know, what, I also wonder with, with 323 customers in North Cohasset, I'm, I'm sort of assuming that the, that the Cohasset member will, I wonder how, well, we'll just have to see how that goes in the future.
I mean, I'm not, I don't think this is a huge issue. I just want to make sure that we've considered what the options are.
Yeah, part of me thinks that if, if we added a seat to Hingham, we may hear from Hull saying, well, then can we have another one? And I kind of don't want to get into a cycle like that.
I agree.
So, okay. Questions from the audience on Article, Article P? Okay?
I will move to recommend favorable action of Article P.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Article Q. Tom, I'll just run through this. So Article Q, we mentioned it a little bit when Capitol Outlay was here. The, it has always been contemplated with the purchase of the water company that, that we would spend approximately $2.7 million a year in capital. And that's capital to replace water mains and do major capital improvements such as, you know, a rehabilitation of a storage tank or, you know, a new roof on the water treatment plant and, and other things of that nature. As we all know, our, our, our water system is aging, the infrastructure is old, and the Anderson Tax Model recommended annual capital investment of $2.7 million. Because these, this capital will be invested in things that, you know, could have up to a hundred-year life, the town intends to borrow to be funded from the enterprise fund. This is a warrant article that would seek $2.7 million for the first year. It obviously wouldn't take effect until the town purchased the water system, but it would enable us to get started on capital and have those funds be available at the beginning of the fiscal year, which feels very, very important.
Yes.
No taxpayer impact on this one, not competing for capital dollars.
Yep. And, and no money's going out until we actually own the water company.
That's right, that's right. And a member of the advisory committee asked whether that language needed to be referenced in the article, and council said that the language was sufficient.
Yes.
So...
I'm comfortable with this.
Okay. Do you would like to make a motion?
I'm going to ask for...
Oh, any questions or comments from the audience? Okay?
Okay, I would make a motion to recommend favorable action of Article Q.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tom, you're going to get Article R.
Sure. So Article R is an adoption of a Mass General Law that allows for municipalities to, to initiate liens against unpaid water, water bills. So someone doesn't pay their water bill, the town can initiate a lien, that amount, the charge would be added to their tax bill and collected that way eventually.
How would that work for, let's say, someone in Hull?
So they would have, they're going, we've given similar language to both Hull and Cohasset, they'll have to adopt them.
Cohasset actually has adopted it.
Yeah, Cohasset's already done it because they have a water system.
Right.
Right.
And that'll be governed, the way that it's employed will be governed by an IMA.
Okay.
This is similar to what we have for the sewer. And this is a common municipal tool that, that is best practices recommended by one of our transition consultants, Jeff Nutting. Any questions on Article R?
I will move to recommend favorable action of Article R.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay. Did Michelle have to go next door?
She did.
Okay, I think you and I are going to have to run over there quickly. Okay. We have no appointments. Town Administrator Report?
Tonight, thank you.
Okay. Joe? Okay. I don't have any report as well. The board will be meeting this Thursday, February 27th at 6:30 to take up a couple pieces of business. Not unusual this time of year that we're having a couple different meetings. I would just say in, in closing, as you can tell from our agenda tonight, we're really working hard, along with other boards and committees, to prepare the budget and prepare the warrant articles for town meeting's consideration. And we take that responsibility very seriously. And I would just remind people that the Hingham calendar has the dates of hearings and those are open to the public. There's always an opportunity for public comment and input, and it's a great way to be informed in the lead up to town meeting. So with that, I'd take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor? Aye. Good night, everybody.